Kelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher. Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers. Counselor Powers.
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Riche. Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
Counselor Fisher and Counselor Riche are unable to attend tonight's meeting. And both asked to be excused. Is there a consensus of counsel to excuse Counselor Fisher and Counselor Riche?
Yes.
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 I would like to take a moment to introduce our new city manager, Mohadine Buhari, and ask everyone to join me and welcome him to our city. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayan, the council, for this opportunity. And I'm looking forward to serve the people of Augsburg and the departments that I'll be heading. So please connect with me, and I'm looking for feedback and ideas to improve the city. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move to executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit, employment history, and a lot of things. Is there a... Do I have a second? There's just been so many. Okay.
Executive session with just four, with just five?
Yeah, yes.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
I would like to extend the offer to Angela Gray to extend the executive session.
Yeah, that sounds good.
We have audio from G. Stoll now. Yes, so it's working. I can hear it, yes. Thank you.
Mike back?
I'm just verifying. I don't have a visual on him. Councilor Powers, have you returned?
I'm here.
He's here. Go ahead, Mayor.
Let the record reflect that upon returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. We have two presentations tonight, and we will begin with the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, Chief Kenneth Gardner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilors.
Good morning. Good evening, tonight.
I'm great. Welcome to the city, sir. A special thank you to Andrea for making it this drama-free this year on this appearance. I do appreciate that. I would also like to thank Kathy Joffe for all her help she always does for me in getting this ready. Usually I come, I paint a very nice and rosy picture on how things have been over the last year, and I would love to stand here and be saying the same thing this year. In fact, I'm going to do that, but there's a significant change that have literally happened in the last two weeks. I can't just do that, unfortunately. However, there are many positives in 2022, so let's begin there. Before I do get into the nuts and bolts, let me first give a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the members of the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad to this council for the second payment for these old refrigerators that you gave to us. We sincerely appreciate the extra efforts the councilors gave in finally getting those funds released. Just the fact that this council agreed to purchase this equipment shows the commitment to providing a quality EMS system in Augsburg. At this time, I'll just highlight a few things from the report, as there are many others, unfortunately, that I have to get into. In the 2022 calendar year, which was our second 62nd year of service, we responded to 2,664 calls, 100 more than in 2001. Our career staff also has done outstanding job. OBRS continues to have the second lowest scratch rate of any department in St. Lawrence County. Any agency that ever answered 1,000 fewer calls than we did. Scratch rates are whether or not you are able to get out to service and whether or not you have to mutual aid out. Of our 2,664 calls, we only had to mutual aid out 55. That makes our scratch rate an astounding 2%. In other words, we were on scene 98% of all of our calls in the past year. And that includes not only running first calls, but second calls, third calls, and also mutual aids out to where the heck, wherever we go in the 320 some odd miles that we've covered. We responded to 1,630 calls in the city of Augsburg. The city of Augsburg is very unique, and I believe, and I've said this on numerous occasions, it's an example to other cities across New York State how a successful EMS system can work and does work. As I've said on numerous occasions, working with our partners in this Augsburg City Fire Department, the cities, the citizens of Augsburg receive an outstanding quality of care and in extremely timely manner. Professionalism is portrayed at its finest every single day. I would personally like to thank Chief Ken Stolz, he's been outstanding since he took that position and helping work alongside with us. We did start a transport division in 2022 to be able to get the sickest of the sick out of our hospitals, and where we used to get them to was to Syracuse to a higher level of care. Sometimes we'd take them to Vermont and Burlington. However, once the shortage of nurses began in the middle of COVID from whether they received their vaccination, didn't want to get their vaccinations, whatever, the numbers plummeted in New York State, and over the past year, we have found ourselves going as far as Buffalo, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, and over the last month, about 14 different times to Westchester Hospital. It's becoming extremely difficult, not only on the people that are taking the transports because they've turned into, instead of being a two-and-a-half-hour transport, into seven-to-eight-hour type transports, and it's also become some serious wear tear on some bar vehicles. It's a concerning problem that we have to deal with. The past year, as far as calls go, we had a huge increase in unconscious fainting calls, which many times are caused by overdoses, and unfortunately, this still remains a true crisis.
Did you say vaping calls? I'm sorry.
Fainting.
Sorry. My apologies. Yeah, for unconscious and fainting calls, passing out. We do have a huge problem in the city of Augsburg, as we all know, currently with overdoses. Thank goodness for the police service trained in Narcan usage and the fire department first responders in the training at the Narcan. It has, without a doubt, saved many lives in this city over the last year. We've lost way too many, to be clear, in this city over the last year, but their efforts have absolutely saved numerous people. Augsburg Rescue Squad, we are so very proud to say that we are out of service on first calls in under three minutes, and we average arriving on scene in under five minutes of dispatch within the city of Augsburg limit. When you include all the surrounding areas we service, which is 320 some odd square miles from any place from Waddington all the way to Hammond and almost out to Canton, our on-scene times are an amazing seven minutes this year. That is the best that we have ever been. The members of Augsburg Rescue are extremely thankful to all our first responder partners from the city of Augsburg, Village of Hubelton, and any of the others that we work with. They have been amazing. Our dedicated volunteers this year donated in excess of 43,200 hours in service time to their community. At the current average rate for paid providers, this represents a saving of over $864,000 to the communities that we serve, and that includes not only paying the salary and benefits, but salary and benefits. We are lucky enough this year that we have one person with 50 years of service, one with over 41 years, two with 30-plus years of service, four with over 20, and two with over 10 to 14. For membership, you know, we provide everything from EMTs up to paramedics, and some of them are just drivers, and I don't want to say just drivers because that comes off wrong, but Lord knows, without drivers, we'd never even be able to get out of the base. The highlights, I guess, I already thanked you for these all monitors. We are very pleased, and we thank Andrew very much for efforts on this, that we have been able to continue moving forward with the sale and the happiness department store. We're looking forward to this, number one. Obviously, it will help us financially. Secondly, the biggest thing is that we'll be able to put unused property back on the tax rolls for the city. We'll also be able to open up employment for people within the city, and furthermore, it will provide people with a home-owned place to go shop. So, the rest of it, you can read. We talked about the Kelly Room. The Kelly Room is always available. The only one big mishap we had, which we decided to make national news, it turned out CNN decided to make us national, was when we had the wonderful gentleman steal our ambulance, decide to go on a high-speed chase, crash it through the gentleman's garage, and completely destroy our ambulance, luckily fully insured, but that ambulance, with the time that it takes to get chassis and parts and everything else, will not be here until, we're hoping, August or September of this year. All right? That's the fun part. Since I did that report, and that was all I was hoping to do, and that's usually all I have to do here, and I do apologize for going to take up some of your time this evening, but since the report went out, we've had some extremely important issues come up. Some of them, if they don't change, will affect EMS in this city and across New York State. Some of these we have discussed in the past, but now the issues have become more urgent. These issues have caused many EMS agencies to close, but finally, New York State has issued a new white paper study, which I have included in your packages for each of you, trying to address these issues, but also in some cases, making things more difficult for agencies like ours. First concern is volunteerism has dropped. Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is not immune to this. We have dropped from 62 volunteers. This occurred for many reasons. First, our last two years dealing with COVID caused many volunteers to reevaluate whether EMS is worth the possibility of bringing home these types of diseases to their families. Completely understand that. Secondly, there's been a change in society overall in teaching our younger generation the importance of giving back to their community by volunteering with some organization. I know growing up, it was ingrained in me that my parents, that I would give something back, whether it was volunteer at the library, whether at the hospital, does anybody remember candy strippers? I haven't seen any of those in forever, and/or with a fire EMS agency. We need society to go back to this mindset. Currently, volunteers
All the refrigerators that you gave to us. We sincerely appreciate the extra efforts and counselors gave and finally getting those funds released. Just the fact that this council agreed to purchase this equipment. Shows the commitment to providing a quality EMS system in Augsburg. At this time, I'll just highlight a few things from the report as there are many others unfortunately that I have to get into. In the two thousand twenty-two county year, which was our second point sixty-second year of service. We responded to two thousand six hundred and sixty-four calls. A hundred more than in two thousand and one. Our career staff also has done outstanding job. O B R S continues to have the second lowest scratch rate of any department in Saint Lawrence County. Any agency that answers one thousand fewer calls than we did. Scratch rates are whether or not you are able to get out to service and whether or not you have to mutual aid out. Of our two hundred and two thousand six hundred and sixty-four calls. We only had to mutual aid out fifty-five. That makes our scratch rate an astounding two percent. In other words, we were on scene ninety-eight percent of all of our calls in the past year. And that includes not only running first calls, but second calls, third calls. And also mutual aids out to where the heck wherever we go into three hundred and twenty some odd miles that we've covered. We responded to one thousand six hundred and thirty calls in the city of Augsburg. The city of Augsburg is very unique and I believe and I've said this on numerous occasions. It's an example to other cities across New York State how a successful EMS system can work and does work. As I've said on numerous occasions, working with our partners in this Augsburg City Fire Department. Cities, the citizens of Augsburg receive an outstanding quality of care and in extremely timely manner. Professionalism professionalism is portrayed at its finest every single day. I would personally like to thank Chief Ken Stolz. He's been outstanding since he took that position and helping work alongside with us. We did start a transport division in two thousand and twenty-two to be able to get the sickest of the sick out of our hospitals. And and where we used to get them to was to Syracuse to a higher level of care. Sometimes we take them to Vermont and Burlington. However, once the shortage of nurses began in the middle of COVID from whether they received their vaccination. They want to get their vaccinations, whatever. The numbers plummeted in New York State and over the past year, we have found ourselves going. As far as Buffalo, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania and over the last month about fourteen different times to Westchester Hospital. It's becoming extremely difficult, not only on the people that are taking the transports because they've turned into instead of being a two and a half hour transport into seven to eight hour type transports. And it's also become some serious wear tear on some bar vehicles. It's a concerning problem that we have to deal with. The past year, as far as calls go, we had a huge increase in unconscious fading calls fainting calls. Which many times are caused by overdoses and unfortunately this still remains a true crisis.
Did you say vaping calls? I'm sorry.
Fainting.
Sorry, my apologies. Yeah, for unconscious and fainting calls passing out. We do have a huge problem in the city of Augsburg, as we all know, currently with overdoses. Thank goodness for the police service trained in Narcan usage and the fire department first responders in the training of the Narcan. It has without a doubt saved many lives in this city over the last year. We've lost way too many to be clear in this city over the last year. But their efforts have absolutely saved numerous people. Augsburg Rescue Squad, we are so very proud to say that we are out of service on first calls in under three minutes. And we average arriving on scene in under five minutes of dispatch within the city of Augsburg limit. When you include all the surrounding areas we service, which is three hundred and twenty some odd square miles from any place from Waddington all the way to Hammond and almost out to Canton, our on-scene times are an amazing seven minutes. This year, that is best that we have ever been. The members of Augsburg Rescue are extremely thankful to all our first responder partners from the city of Augsburg, Village of Hubelton. And any of the others that we work with, they have been amazing. Our dedicated volunteers this year donated in excess of forty-three thousand two hundred hours in service time to their community. At the current average rate for paid providers, this represents a saving of over eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars to the communities that we serve. And that includes not only pay, the salary and benefits. We are lucky enough this year that we have one person with fifty years of service, one with over forty-one years, two with thirty-plus years of service. Four with over thirty, twenty and two with over ten to fourteen. For membership, you know, we we provide everything from E M Ts up to paramedics and some of them are just drivers. And I don't want to say just drivers because that comes off wrong, but Lord knows about our drivers, we'd never even be able to get out of the base. The highlights, I guess, I already thanked you for these all monitors. We are very pleased and we thank Andrew very much for efforts on this. That we have been able to continue moving forward with the sale and the happiness department store. We're looking forward to this, number one, obviously will help us financially. Secondly, the biggest thing is that we'll be able to put unused property back on their tax rolls for the city. We'll also be able to open up employment for people within the city. Furthermore, it will provide people with a home owned place to go shop. So the rest of it, you can read, we talked about the Kelly Room, the Kelly Room is always available. The only one big mishap we had, which we decided to make national news, it turned out CNN decided to make us national. Was when we had the wonderful gentleman steal our ambulance, decide to go on a high speed chase, crash it through gentleman's garage and completely destroy our ambulance. Luckily, fully insured, but that ambulance with the time that it takes to get chassis and parts and everything else will not be here until, we're hoping, August or September of this year. All right, that's the fun part. Since I did that report and that was all I was hoping to do, and that's usually all I have to do here. And I do apologize for going to take up some of your time this evening. But since the report went out, we've had some extremely important issues come up. Some of them, if they don't change, will affect EMS in this city and across New York State. Some of these we have discussed in the past, but now the issues have become more urgent. These issues have caused many EMS agencies to close. But finally, New York State has issued a new white paper study, which I have included in your packages. For each of you trying to address these issues, but also in some cases making things more difficult for agencies like ours. First concern is volunteerism has dropped. Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is not immune to this. We have dropped from sixty-two to twenty-five volunteers. This occurred for many reasons. First, our last two years dealing with COVID caused many volunteers to reevaluate whether EMS is worth the possibility of bringing home these types of diseases to their families. Completely understand that. Secondly, there's been a change in society overall in teaching our younger generation the importance of giving back to their community by volunteering with some organization. I know growing up, it was ingrained in me that my parents, that I would give something back, whether it was volunteer at the library. Whether at the hospital, does anybody remember Candy Strippers? I haven't seen any of those in forever and or with the fire EMS agency. Need society to go back to this mindset. Currently, volunteers in all these areas have grown older and have not been replaced by younger people. We usually have have been able to find new volunteers through local events, but those events have been canceled over the last two years. Boys and Girls Club Expo, the High School D W I drills, career days at all the different schools and at the colleges. Many other public events have hurt our recruitment. On a good note, over the past two months, we have had five new members and all five of them have joined the current E M T class that is going on. And some career days are returning, so hopefully these events will continue returning and our volunteerism will continue to grow back again. But whatever the reason, the loss of volunteers, especially certified volunteers, has meant that we have had to hire additional paid staff to meet our obligation to our local communities to answer the calls. We have been willing to do so and we have so far been able to continue to do that. New York State is also recognizing that the current nine-one-one system is broken. As I talked about our scratch rates in two thousand twenty-two being so great. Many of our neighboring departments are struggling to answer calls, which is causing us to go out and answer theirs. And New York State has proposed consolidation of departments for anyone whose scratch rates are lower than. This is a little tough take eighty percent in two thousand twenty-four, eighty-five percent in twenty-five, ninety and twenty-six and ninety-five and twenty-seven. So what happens to us at Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, to be honest? If this is a force, volunteer departments will have to will have to consolidate in our area coverage. That would include Hammond, who is at fifty-three percent, Lisbon sixty-three, Rensselaer Falls sixty-five, Waddington seventy-four. Madrid sixty-nine and Norfolk at fifty-three. So how will this work? Moorestown already mutual aids to Hammond and we go out and we do the ALS set of stuff on that. That won't change very much. We already we already mutual aid to the others except for Norfolk. However, if they force the four that are on our certificate of need to consolidate plus Norfolk. Where would they put the station? And we all know volunteers won't drive long distances to get to where the ambulance is stationed. And plus be able to get there and out of service within what currently the county requires four minutes before mutual aid gets started anyways. What's the impact on Augsburg Rescue in one word, it would be huge. We would end up having to place a second staffed ambulance in our service area twenty-four seven at a centralized location. We would obviously have to hire more staff. And pay obviously additional staff, then rent a location to put the ambulance. Where is the money from this coming from? New York State does not address that. In the New York State report, they talk about volunteer and paid certified providers, however. No statistics in regards to volunteers overall. On a very concerning note, it does acknowledge the drop of ten thousand certified providers across the state in two thousand and twenty-one. Most alarming statistic issue in the report is that the number of certified providers renewing their certificates dropped by fifteen percent also in two thousand twenty-one. When the numbers come out and I bet though, they are at least the percentage will drop at least that much in two thousand twenty-two. However, more concerning is their own facts. Of the remaining certified providers across New York State, less than fifty percent of them actually provide care. That means forty percent, forty-two percent of the currently certified providers in New York State covered one hundred percent of the calls in New York State. That is obviously unsustainable. To the credit of the report, New York State finally acknowledges the problem. As I always put it, EMS is a redheaded stepchild, please no reference to yours truly. Of the emergency services, now they're taking steps in getting changes in the legislature. They acknowledge the importance of finally recognizing EMS as an essential service in New York State. We've only been calling for this for about thirty years. In the entire country, only nine states recognize EMS as an essential service. By making us an essential service, this would allow paid EMS personnel to have access to the New York State pension fund. Because currently there's no retirement for EMS. And I can testify to that. And O B R S access to other forms of funding making possible paid career staff more. In the report, it compares average salaries across New York State between EMS, fire, police and nursing. Interesting enough, the closest they come to the North Country in the report is Utica Rome area. In the in that area, EMS averages thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars a year. Whereas firefighters average fifty-six thousand five hundred, one hundred and eighty percent difference. Police average fifty-seven thousand five hundred, one hundred and eighty-seven percent difference. And nurses average sixty-five thousand, a two hundred and seven percent difference. I know how they include the North Country salaries for EMS are definitely less. New York State wants to change the way we recognize EMS providers from a certification to a professional licensure. This means being recognized like others in the medical profession such as nurses and all other parts of the medical service. EMS continues to be the only medical area in New York State not currently recognized this way. I believe in the end, this is a good thing. However, as part of this licensure, New York State wants paramedics to receive an associate's degree. They want critical care paramedics and flight paramedics and any supervisor to require a bachelor's degree. And finally, anyone who is in a leadership position such as a chief and they have not specified between volunteer or paid. Okay, they will need to have a master's degree. I understand what they're trying to do, but in my opinion, this will absolutely eliminate volunteer paramedics. Currently, just to become an E M T as a volunteer, you have to go to class for a hundred and forty hours. Plus do clinical time on that on top of that. It used to be a class that it would take you forty to sixty hours tops. New York State is just, once again, we're doing overkill. And they're making this course even harder and harder on people and how you get volunteers to do that at night after working all day. It's just, it's not fair. Anyway, so what happens to strictly department, volunteer departments on top of that? How does anyone get an E M T or especially anyone higher care, higher level of care such a paramedic? To be to do that and be a volunteer. I mean, I can't see somebody who has a regular job now having to go get a associate's degree who have their paramedic. It's not going to happen. This will mean the volunteer EMS chiefs will have to get a master's degree too. Really? I can't see that happening. What will this do to the number of persons wanting to make EMS a profession? I guess in the end, we're going to have to wait and see. Lastly, and most importantly, reimbursements to EMS and to Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad. Some of this, I'm telling you, it's going to blow your mind. Since two thousand and seventeen, there has been no increase in Medicare or Medicaid. And at that time, with the increase, New York State EMS. They acknowledged was underfunded by thirty-one point four million dollars in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand twenty-one, it's been estimated between forty and fifty million dollars. In New York State, forty-two percent of residents receive Medicaid Medicare funded programs. Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squads are much scarier than those. In two thousand twenty-two, the residents that were treated that we treated were at a seventy-three percent mark. That means for those of you that don't know Medicaid Medicaid, they set the price. The government sets a price on what they're going to pay. We have no say in it whatsoever. It does not pay to cover any call. It does not cover a cost per call, but we have no say in it and we have to take whatever the heck they give us. So by us being a seventy-three, that really hurts the bottom line. So Neo, what does this mean for the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad? Since two thousand seventeen, obviously medical supply, fuel, medical equipment, personnel salaries, benefits have grown at a much greater rate than Medicaid and Medicare have grown. This obviously causes a huge income problem. However, that's just half of the story. In two thousand twenty-two, Exellus, Blue Cross Blue Shield and other private insurances have made things even harder on all EMS agencies. For the first time ever in two thousand and twenty-two, Exellus Blue Cross has decided to deny payments to ambulance that do hospital to hospital transports. And they did that without notifying anybody. We didn't find out until the end of the year two thousand twenty-two. They have now taken the position that these are now in hospital procedures. So they are denying all appeals for payment and forcing these to go to New York State arbitration. You guys certainly deal with New York State like I do. So as you know, nothing moves fast in New York State. Therefore, these appeals probably won't be heard for two to three years. And I believe Exellus will continue to take this position in two thousand twenty-three and beyond. Until we get until they get told by New York State to stop this practice or the legislation is changed. In the meantime, for two thousand and twenty-two, they owe us over seventy-five thousand dollars. Even worse, as I have addressed this council about for the last four years due to current New York State legislation. Private insurances are not required to pay directly to the ambulance services. In fact, anytime we do a nine-one-one call for service. Here, the private insurances will pay one hundred percent of the billed amount. But they send it to the patient, expect the patients to send the money to Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad. However, the checks are made out to the patients and not the provider of service. So many patients don't do that. Instead, they deposit the money in their bank account like it's free money. And we have to try and go through the legal system to try and get the money back. Obviously, this takes time and money for us to achieve this. In two thousand and twenty-two, there currently is ninety-four thousand dollars that has not been paid to us, just kept and deposited into their own accounts. In fact, there's even a city of Augsburg employee that has kept the money. So for O B R S, the combination between Medicare and private insurances, we have not received one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars at to this moment for two thousand twenty-two alone. I can only see it getting worse in two twenty-three. What's even worse is already in two thousand twenty-three, a recent law that was proposed by our governor, passed by our New York State lawmakers. Has made it against the law for ambulance to take anyone that gets Medicaid or Medicare to collections. Now let me be clear here. We have never taken anyone receiving Medicaid or Medicare to collections and we never will. That is not what we do. However, here's the real problem. If someone has private insurance, but they have Medicare or Medicaid as a secondary insurance. We can't take them to collections for the money they receive for the medical care rendered by us. So for as an example, if someone we care for and transport to the hospital has private insurance, we will bill the private insurance company. With the current way the legislation is written, the patient will receive that check deposited in their bank accounts. If they decide decide not to turn the money over to us, if the patient has Medicaid or Medicare as a secondary insurance. That even that isn't even built, we don't even build the Medicare and the Medicaid part. We can't take that person to collections. We can't take them to small client's court, we can't do anything about it. If this stays this way, not only will many ambulance companies go away, but O B R S could be a danger of also going down the road. In fact, this is just an incentive to cheat the system. Hey, why not call the ambulance, receive a nice check, deposit the money and then let's go on vacation or do something fun. As an example, we have an individual who called nine-one-one in two thousand twenty-two, used the ambulance two times. And already in two thousand twenty-three, it has been transported fourteen times. Now, we certainly, by law, we cannot refuse to take, not to go and not take somebody, we have to. That person has received over nineteen thousand dollars and not for already one penny of the funds. But currently, there's not a darn thing we can do about it.
Nineteen thousand dollars.
Nineteen thousand dollars to one person. Yes, sir.
They got quite a racket going.
Yeah, that's what I couldn't get racket going right now. You know, our lawmakers are not helping this at all, they're not seeing it and they, you know, we've talked about this for the last four years, you know, and.
You've talked about this with the state or states.
With you guys, I've mentioned it each year that, you know, that they do not have to direct payback to us, that they pay it to the patient, they expect the patient to turn it over. Now they've made it even harder for us to get it, obviously with the Medicare Medicaid part. And it's now literally against the law for us to try and collect.
That's amazing.
It's it's just ridiculous. The system is obviously broken and it needs a quick fix. You can all see what's coming next. We will need to recoup these funds somehow. Whether that means we need more financial help from the local municipalities we serve. Or we get our legislators in New York State to change the laws and require private insurance companies to pay directly to the ambulance companies. Currently, finally, this issue has started to gain some steam in the New York State Senate. But we will need council's help with this issue now more than ever. So contacting our local people and would help us tremendously. There are other ways for us to recoup these funds by making some changes in our contract. That would not require more money from the city or increase taxes to any resident to resolve this problem. And I would be glad to sit down with city manager or councilor anytime, day or night, to discuss these. They're really not that difficult, there's just some wording that can be put in it. And there's ways that, you know, we'll talk behind closed doors. In the white paper, there are twenty-five recommendations to help the EMS system in New York State, which is in trouble. I know you you all have lots of other things to do and I am sorry to take up this much of your time this evening. But you can see all those recommendations just on pages nine, ten and eleven, there's twenty-five of them, just skim through them quickly. Please check those, contact me with any questions that you might have. And now that I've done all the concerns and I do realize there was a lot of lot of it tonight. I'm going to try and end on a positive note. In today's self-centered society, we love to use such terms like he's a hero, she's an icon. They're a god, he's a king, or they're legendary. And we use these terms to describe people in sports and entertainment. Who receive millions of dollars to entertain us. Thankfully, we still use the term for heroic acts performed by our servicemen and women, police officers and firefighters. These are the real heroes. So what do we call a person who just likes to go through life serving others as a volunteer and is embarrassed to receive any recognition and doesn't want it? Everyone in this room has come in contact with this person in public. Whether he is working the front desk at the bowling alley, fixing the pin machines when they break down. Tending the bar if it's needed. Or may have even drilled holes in a bowling ball for you. And if you've ever received a trophy or a plaque, it was probably produced by him. You may not even know his name and that's Pierce Pot. He is probably one of the most humble and unassuming men you could ever meet. In fact, I will probably have to hide under my desk for the next next two weeks. And who knows, probably even longer when he hears I did this about him because he has been very clear, he does not want this done. However. I will take all the displeasure he wants to throw at me for having to do this. It is worth it because he deserves it. In a time when you turn on the news and you hear, all you hear are negatives like political leaders arguing against each other constantly. Train derailments turned into political statements instead of about the residents who have to live with the consequences. A war in Ukraine, constant tensions between countries, not to mention our state, sometimes local items. I think it's time we finally have some good news. The Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad. Sorry, God chokes me up because it's an amazing. The Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is so fortunate to have a true feel-good story to share. His name is John Porter. On November fifteenth nineteen seventy-two. Very unassuming gentleman walked into the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad and applied to be a volunteer. He was accepted, thank goodness. Then a true shining example was born. John quickly became an emergency medical technician, then continued moving up, became an advanced E M T critical care, providing advanced life-saving medical care. He has also become a dog master and leader of our offshore rescue team. In his spare time, he continued to serve on the board of director and during. and during his time, he has even served as our treasurer at one time. John has done this consistently for over fifty years. Like every other week, I can count on him on Tuesday nights for eight hours, no questions asked. He has touched people's lives when they were having their worst days. And the funny thing is, Mr. Porter wouldn't even want them to know it was him helping them. We in the city of Augsburg have a shining light, an example of how we should treat and care for each other. John Porter has served his community for fifty years with the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, and in my research, he is the first and only person to ever do this with just one EMS agency. As much as he doesn't want it, Mr. Porter deserves our gratitude, and he is the true definition of a hero. I want to thank the council for allowing me to go much longer than usual, and I promise next year I will try not to. To be clear, the volunteers and the career members of the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad really do love doing what we do for the citizens of Augsburg and the surrounding area. Let that never be a doubt. I thank you all for your time, and God bless.
Thank you.
Ken, questions?
Yeah. I'm sure there, first of all, just to reiterate what you said, there's a volunteer shortage, period. Rescue squad, fire, EMS. I've seen the governor talk about it. I've seen the politicians talk about it. They're trying to create some sort of incentive. Maybe it's a lot of smoke and mirrors, who knows? But you're talking about further restrictions tonight and, you know, prohibitions to keep people from volunteering. Obviously, you probably belong to some lobbying organizations, and if there's any sort of a resolution that, that we can pass or help you get Mark Walzick and Scott Gray in on and, and, and support and help you with this lobbying effort across New York State, I'm sure this council would love to do that. And I should have started out with, thank you. And let me do that right now. Thank you for all you guys do, our EMS, the fire department, and thank you to John Porter. I think I've known him since I was a little kid running around the bowling alley.
You started telling me, but well, it is what it is. As to what you say, not only with us are they making it more difficult to take firefighter one or firefighter two, these guys back here will tell you. They've extended that, and that's becoming even more difficult, and you're asking the volunteers there to do that too, and they wonder why they're losing firemen. In the report, the, the, the great incentive that they want to throw out is currently there's a two hundred dollar a year tax credit that they can apply for in, you know, when they file a tax. Okay, their answer to that currently is they want to raise it from two hundred to five hundred. And they think that's going to solve the whole problem.
That's an insult.
I, I, you know, I just shake my head because I don't understand some. Some of the things they put in that white paper are outstanding recommendations. We'll be great for it. But some of them just don't make sense, and I don't understand it. The consolidation thing is something that should scare everybody in this room. Because if those five departments on that side all go away, who's covering? It's going to have to be us. It's our C O N, and how do we fund covering them? I don't have that answer right now. I have absolutely no idea how we do it. Even worse with what they're playing with, the games with the insurance, with Medicare, Medicaid, and five insurance. I mean, they're just, excuse the expression, we're just getting jerked around.
And you've talked, Dan?
Yes, Michael. Thank you for your presentation, and, and thank you to a very humble man, John Porter. Wouldn't say, uh, wouldn't say, doesn't have much to say really to anybody, but grind it out every day. Whenever you see him, he's always doing something for the community and and the, and the rescue squad. I want to piggyback Dan a little bit here on the volunteer aspect. If anybody has a chance, go to the New York State Assembly site and pull up the public protection hearings from February seventh of this year and take a look at the difficulty even larger metropolitan areas are having as far as volunteers, E M Ts, EMS services, any firefighters, the whole nine yards. It was, there's a very lengthy, about an hour and a half into it. I apologize, about eight and a half hours into it, you'll find where the firefighters associations for the state of New York, including the volunteers, are up there begging for help from the state government to assist in, in recruiting and retention.
The one thing, the one thing council powers knows better than anybody, and I was a P B A president when I was down in Canada, so I understand it. But the most powerful lobbies currently in New York State are the teachers, the nurses, and of course, the insurance companies. Okay, insurance companies can throw more money to people left and right, and they win currently. Somehow, that system needs to get fixed and needs to get taken over. You know, how are we training all these volunteers? Who's paying us? Help train the volunteers? Who's, you know? What are we going to do? I really need to sit down with a wonderful Mr. City Manager. I warned you in your office tonight that we were going to be meeting really soon. But I will sit down with council members and everything else. There are ways that we can recoup those funds without adding a tax rate onto the rolls, without causing the city to have to pay anything more. There are legal things that are allowed to be put into our contract that we're going to have to do with all our different municipalities, which will force these people and which to turn over the money. But that's something that we will talk about in practice.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that wherever we can for you.
I appreciate everything you guys do for us. I really do. You guys have always been great for us. I'm really sorry to take up that much of your time, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, guys.
Our next presentation will be by Angela Gray.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'd like to give you a
Sorry.
A brief overview of the two thousand and twenty-two financial closeout for our city of Augsburg. The numbers that we're going to talk about tonight, I do want to preface this that these are possibly would change in wrapping up the, closing up the year. There are certain estimates that have to be made. And as we move closer to the final audit, hopefully some more information becomes known on the estimates that are, some of which, which are contained herein. That may change these numbers slightly, but not, not too much. So turning to page two of the presentation titled two thousand and twenty-two financial highlights. In quick summary, the general fund had a deficit in two thousand and twenty-two of one million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately. We began the year with a six point one million dollar fund balance, which we are expecting to end the year with a four point four million dollar fund balance. We did appropriate some of that fund balance for use in two thousand and twenty-three, so we'll talk about that a little further. The next slide will show you the operation, operating results of all three major funds. The general fund having a deficit of one point six, I'm sorry, one point seven six million. In two thousand and twenty-one, this same number was a two point one million dollar surplus. So the surplus of twenty-one is almost all canceled out by the operations of two thousand and twenty-two. Water fund had a surplus in two thousand and twenty-two of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars prior year. This had a surplus of six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. The sewer fund had a surplus of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which is a decrease over the two thousand and twenty-one surplus of four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Some of which has contributed to that surplus in this reduction of surplus in the sewer fund was an election to pay down some of the sewer debt prior to it going to long-term financing to try to lessen that payment for the next thirty years. So that was a planned decrease in that particular fund. The next slide shows you your revenue year over year in a graph format. We can see that our property taxes, the orange lines are two thousand and twenty-two. The blue lines are two thousand and twenty-one. We have a reduction of property taxes due to a tax cut that was instituted at the budget time for two thousand and twenty-two. Probably one of the most notable decreases is our sales tax. The sales tax has decreased one point seven million over the prior year. The numbers that you're looking at for two thousand and twenty-one, we are on a sharing agreement with the county where we received six point four four percent of all sales within the county versus in two thousand and twenty-two is a hybrid number. The first three months of the year, we still had a sharing agreement with the county on the six point four four. We preempted on March first, the beginning of the sales tax year, and since then, we have seen a reduction in the collection of sales tax. So that is clearly depicted in the chart right there. Other items that we have for revenue, our next largest source of revenue is state aid and state grants. We do receive one point seven million dollars in AIM, and we had some other state grants to share as well. The interfund revenues of the water and sewer remained fairly constant year over year. That will not be the case in two thousand and twenty-three, where we see a planned increase of those funds, almost one-third. The CHIPS money, relatively stable, departmental income relatively stable year over year. The federal aid, you will notice an increase in that. And that is related to the ARPA funding. So we had some additional ARPA funding recognized in revenue in excess of what was in the prior year.
What?
Yes, sir.
What aspect of the ARPA additional funds for two thousand and twenty-two are we looking at here?
What happens is we recognize revenue when it's earned, and so when the money came in in twenty
Oh, okay, I got it, okay.
One, we didn't spend a lot of it, and a lot of that revenue hits in the two thousand and twenty-two year. So any questions on revenue? All right, flipping ahead, looking at our real property tax rates. Since two thousand and twenty, you can see the decrease in tax rates has brought those rates down to almost historical low for two thousand and twenty-two. Two thousand and twenty-three, we did a two percent increase on those rates, and we are back at where the city was in approximately two thousand and thirteen. They're relatively similar. The city is finishing up its citywide assessment, and we do expect those to impact the city residents in the two thousand and twenty-four year. You can see the breakdown of tax exempt versus taxable property. Significant amount of tax exempt property is really a hamper, hampering on our real property taxes, so. Turning ahead is kind of a look at where the, when this, when the residents of Augsburg are paying their fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents overall tax rate, where is that money going? The city is receiving thirty-two cents approximately on every dollar that a resident is paying in their property taxes. The school district is receiving more than half of that dollar. So we break up the dollar to say that the school receives about fifty-two percent of the residents' tax bills, and the city receives thirty-two percent of that. The remaining portion is going to the county and the library. The next slide, just as a review of the sales tax revenue where we have been. And you can see that over the course of time from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-two, let me back up to two thousand and twenty-one, we've seen the increase of sales tax. We all knew the decrease was coming. We budgeted to anticipated revenue of three million. It was a very conservative budget, and we did actually hit that budget almost relatively close. There was a little little margin there that we went over. We went over twenty-one thousand dollars. So that budgeted number, a lot of work went into that, and it wasn't far off. And as I said, in the collection of sales tax, which was three million, twenty-one thousand dollars, three of those, approximately two and a half, I would say, three of those months were the benefit of the sharing, the old sharing agreement with St. Lawrence County. Fortunately, as a preempted city, the county did agree to voluntarily share one half of the home rule that they're receiving. So without that, we would have had a different picture, even more detrimental to the city, so. It would be great to have
I'm sorry.
Sure. It's approximately hundred and sixty-five thousand a quarter is what it's averaging, of one forty-five to one sixty, so about
Five and a half?
Five and a half, somewhere in that range. We have estimated in budget time that if we could somehow move the city in a position to receive the full one percent in the city limits, on the sales within the city limits, that the city's benefit from that would be approximately six hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Mr. Blue Shire, you've been disruptive during both presentations. Please be respectful. You know what way. Act like a, act like a fireman, okay? Go ahead, Angel. Sorry.
Thank you. Your next slide just kind of portrays the additional major revenue sources. So our top revenue sources in the city are, without a doubt, our property taxes and our sales tax. The interesting thing is the gap between your next largest, which is one million, seven hundred and eight thousand dollars of state aid to municipalities, and your second one is shrinking. So we used to have a three million, we were the benefit, had the benefit of a three million dollar spread between those numbers in two thousand and twenty-one. And now our state aid is one point seven million. We had three million of sales tax in two thousand and twenty-two, and we have budgeted two point six million for two thousand and twenty-three. So it's just an interesting way to look at that, is that the revenue that we are relying on as our second largest source of revenue just is over time shrinking. So. The money that we received from the water and sewer funds the last three years is, is slightly over eight hundred thousand dollars. We have increased that by three hundred and thirty thousand in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, and we will talk about the impact of that coming up. The next chart shows your total functional expenses in the general fund by major categories, and it shows it relative to the prior year. So your general support services was two, I'm going to round approximately two million dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, and it's two point four million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. Your public safety costs have increased from seven point nine million to eight point six million. And I would like to point out on this chart that removed from the eight point six million dollar number was the purchase of the fire truck to keep those comparative. So if you were to take the financial statements and add up the numbers, you're not going to come back to the eight point six because I removed a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase to keep those comparative. There was any questions on that?
So that eight-six is the real number after we received the money for the fire department or?
It is the, the operating number without the major capital purchase of an almost million dollar fire truck. If the fire truck was in there, that would have been a misleading chart, in my opinion, because it would have showed that the cost would have been nine point five million in the two thousand and twenty-two year versus seven point eight in the two thousand and twenty-one year. So I removed that to make them comparable.
Right. We had a in overtime, in hazard pay, in overtime between our, both our police and fire departments. Well, I know you're going to give us a presentation on that in the future, so.
Yes, we'll go into a very detailed presentation.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Your public works costs have increased from two point six million to two point seven million in all other expenses in the city, which would be debt service is one of the primary ones, has increased from one point three million to just shy of one point four million. So there's certainly a trend of rising costs across the general fund. There is no mistake on that, and we have witnessed that even in a very intimate way when doing the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Moving ahead is a graph that would show you percentage-wise, what portion of your general fund is made up of those four categories. You can see that your general support services, so this is your comptroller's office, your planning office, your clerk's office, is about sixteen percent of the overall city budget. The public works is eighteen percent. The public works is eighteen percent. And your public safety represents fifty-seven percent of your total expenditures within the city. The next, uh, chart gives you a high level view of the debt outstanding. And I would like to point out that this is the debt outstanding across all three funds, water, sewer, and the general fund. You will see that we ended two thousand twenty-two with less than five million dollars about long-term debt outstanding. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one, we ended the year with less than five million dollars of long-term debt outstanding. For two thousand twenty-two. That same number is shy of thirty-five million dollars. So we've increased significant debt. The chart does look a little obscure, um, due to that sharp increase. All related to the sewer fund. We also show the breakdown between the types of borrowings that we do. So we can take a tax anticipation note, a bond anticipation note, and a bond. Um, bands and tans, as are referred to, are. Temporary lending that will convert, um, at some point going to be paid off, um, or convert to a bond. And the current makeup of our debt in the city is large in part bonds at this point in time. We have two. Small bands outstanding right now. And so the next chart will give you the same information about the debt, thirty-plus million dollars of debt outstanding within the city. Um, and showing you that by fund. So the water fund is almost a shadow at the bottom of that. There's very little debt outstanding in the water fund. The sewer fund has our greatest amount of debt, as we've discussed many times, and the general fund, um, is about five. Five million dollars. Any questions? So the final slide, I just tried to summarize sort of where we've been, where we're headed. We have certainly some physical challenges in the city of Augsburg. Um, between two thousand twenty-two's use of fund balance and two thousand twenty-three's appropriation of fund balance. We have utilized in twenty-four short months fifty percent of the built-up fund balance. More importantly, we've utilized this for reoccurring expenditures. The danger of that is we're relying on our fund balance to pay our everyday bills. And at some point in time, without a change, a change in expenses, a change in revenue. We're out of fund balance very quickly. This is not sustainable. And my recommendation would be to work together, uh, as council. And with staff, to establish a fund balance policy. That would prevent the use of fund balance. It would kind of put some parameters around that, because as of right now. There is really no restriction onto the use of fund balance set by council. Yes.
Do you, uh, just to state or any entity that does. One, the, have a statute of requirement of meeting a certain amount of.
Currently, the comptroller's office of New York State has a recommended minimum fund balance. Um. It's not statutorily set. Um, that's the recommendation at this point in time.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be from the. And.
Sure. So the estimated recommended fund balance within, based on our city with our budget, is approximately two point three million. We are currently sitting at, uh, four point four. We then utilized one point two. Right on that. Um, and so that puts us in the three point one range. We're approximately seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars away. From the baseline recommended fund balance. Um, important to note going on the agenda, we will be talking about capital projects that we suddenly don't have a choice on. So, um, that is important to note that we are anticipating a gap of about eight hundred thousand dollars between where we anticipate to be sitting and what our minimum recommendation would be. Okay. Uh, debt service, talking about that, while we do see a significant increase in the sewer fund, and we are currently in the process of soliciting. A bond for four point one million dollars. So where we are approximately a little less than five million of debt in the general fund. In a short month, we will be, um, at nine million. That is set to go to market very soon. Um, our capital projects section, uh, the long-term plan for capital expenditures. Needs to be updated. We haven't looked at that in a while. Uh, there was a plan out there. It needs to be updated. It needs to be implemented, implemented, uh, to avoid these emergency expenditures where we get to the end of the. Usefulness of an asset and the city has no choice. We're currently out of control. And the cards are not on our side. We have to do these capital expenditures, and we don't have the reserves to do that. So if, um, if we had a capital improvement plan that took us through a more planned maintenance, not waiting until the end. To where we had to replace a roof or something, um, we would be able to better control those expenditures. We do have several imminent capital project needs within the city, um, almost in the category of can not happen. Um, we have no reserves for these. We have no excess, um, for the current capital needs. Our two thousand twenty-three budget did not address any capital money. I would recommend that we start to establish reserves. For capital projects in all of the funds, the A, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. Because currently, one major upset, there really isn't the room in the budget to absorb those. Uh, we do know that our sewer fund is going to, while there is a fund balance there. Without a significant raise in race, which I would not call the two thousand twenty-three raise insignificant. Um, we're just going to keep using that fund balance to service the debt that we've added in there. And there is an end of the line to that fund balance as well. So, um. When these fund balances get depleted, and there's an emergency, there really is no other choice but to borrow the funds. We, as a city, budgetarily need to commit to these reserves, to building the reserves, even if we start small, setting aside ten thousand, twenty thousand. Over the course of time, these will build, and we will have some money sitting there for unexpected needs. Looking beyond this year to two thousand twenty-four, um. We do have a lack, if your two largest revenue sources in the city are real property taxes and sales tax. Our ability to control sales tax and to raise that revenue is largely tied to economic growth. Economic growth does not happen overnight, as everybody knows. Um, so in a very short window of eighteen months. That's not a revenue that we can plan and increase in. So we're looking at starting to prepare a two thousand twenty-four budget. And that's not a revenue that I would recommend increasing. That falls to property taxes. So the council has made a. Deliberate effort to lower the property taxes. Um. We did raise them this year, but that needs to be significantly considered as we move into the two thousand twenty-four budget. What is appropriate and what is tolerable for the city residents and their property taxes. We have filled the budget gap in two thousand twenty-three. With a significant dollar amount of non-reoccurring revenue sources and an appropriation of fund balance in excess of one million dollars. Not only is that money, some of those monies not available in two thousand twenty-four, it would not be my recommendation to appropriate any. Fund balance further beyond what we have, um, to try to maintain a healthy fund balance going into the future. Um, with that being said, there needs to be some work started on that two thousand twenty-four budget right now. Um, in just a meeting with Mr. Bhurari and Andrea yesterday. We kind of charted out what won't be reoccurring in the revenue side in two thousand twenty-four. And that number is very close to two million dollars. So, um, if you wanted to ask. What the budget gap would be for two thousand twenty-four, without a significant change in revenue or expenditures. Uh, we are probably starting at the, out of the gate with no increase of expenses, which is not realistic with a two million dollar gap. So I stress to you that the budget preparation cannot wait until the. Time period of the last quarter of the year, which is when it's traditionally been done. That action needs to be started now to look at alternative ways to fund and run the city. Um, we are also going to be, um. Subject to some economic conditions that are also beyond our control. The public, um. Environment has been living off small businesses, households, it doesn't matter, COVID money. So the government has put a tremendous amount of COVID money into every economy. And that money is no longer available to the rates it has been in two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty, and in some respect, two thousand twenty-two. So that, again, might argue, has been feeding a little bit of the sales tax revenue. So there are some economic conditions that aren't in our favor either. So. If you get nothing out of this presentation tonight, it is my strongest recommendation. That we start focusing on maintaining spending in two thousand twenty-three while preparing the two thousand twenty-four budget. Starting very, very soon.
I can't thank you enough for your honesty. And, uh, I think that the budget that was originally presented by Andrea. And yourself and city staff, that we didn't adopt was probably a little bit closer to what we probably should have recognized. Loss in revenue. And the one aspect especially that we can't control, which is the tax rate. Clearly, it's been cut too much in the last couple of years. For what we are facing. So, thank you, Angela, very much. Thank you for staying on board.
Thank you, Angela. Just, just a quick question. I'm wondering if you, uh, you know, I'm sure it crossed your mind whether you had the time to do it or not. It's probably another story, but. What, any idea what it might have looked like had we, um, not preempted? As far as sales tax numbers?
No, um, when we were at a point in time when we, um, were. In the middle of preempting and under the old agreement, the county had shared some data with us that led us to believe we would. Be treated differently, that the six point four four ratio would not be available. And their projection based upon, um. The numbers available at that time was that the city would have only received one point nine million. That was one point nine million at a point in time where the county has also seen growth in their sales tax. So it's not taking into account any growth in the last year. Um.
That's primarily the reason I'm asking is seeing that, you know, seeing that their numbers that came out. I've seen them officially in, in any documents, but through the, just through the news articles.
So I would, I, that's, question has been asked to me on multiple occasions. Um, was it the city's best interest to preempt? And I would say to you, I'm not sure we were given a choice. So the best that we can make out of that situation. Is strongly advocate for the other half a percent of the home rule in our city limits, and that's where we're at with that.
Thank you.
At least.
At least, yes.
I, I'd like to counter Dan's, uh, remark, because. It was a good deal, a good idea to lower the taxes twenty percent, because our fund balance, we were able to grow our fund balance. Were able to do capital projects. We paid three million dollars of, over three million dollars of debt off. Two million dollars. Was borrowed on city docks for a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar project through FEMA. I don't know where that money was used in that whole time, but we paid that two million dollars. That was wrongfully borrowed down there. We also paid off eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was owed to the county. Uh, over decades, um, for uncollected property taxes. And that, and that. Um, amount was growing. It was almost ninety thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen that wasn't paid to them. So we cleaned up a lot of bad debt. Um, but I do regret seeing that we are going so far back into debt. But this, these are, again. Morset Park was, was voted on after the election before we took office and. We would have had to, if we didn't want to do Morsat, which we didn't, uh, we would have had to pay five hundred thousand dollars to the state to not do the project. So. Where our hands are tied there. Um, as far as, as preempting, um. The first meeting, three weeks into office, uh, the county was very angry over the six and seven-year contracts. They said, how, you know, how much is it going to cost us? And they never did negotiate. It was just, you're going down to village rate, and here we are. Thank you, Angela. Good, good presentation.
Thank you.
I think I could counter that point, but, uh, we'll just, we'll just leave it right there as your point. I'd like to see some evidence of the county's anger.
Uh, you were there, you heard him say it. You were there.
Negotiations and I talked to the county and. Once they realize, once they realize that it's a, that there was exchanges made where, for example, the.
No.
Uh, the, oh, there wasn't any exchange, we just.
No, you, you, there was nothing brought up about exchanges.
Concessions that were given paid for the entire length of every kind of raise.
That is not correct.
In, in the first two years only. So that's just one concession. And, uh, and I think the county was quite pleased with what we had done, uh, along with other concessions made, for example, downsize our fire department and things like that. So. I think you're absolutely wrong on that, and you're trying to mislead the public with nonsense.
No, no, Dan, you were there and you heard their anger at the cost to them and their negotiations going forward.
I had great discussions with the county and look forward to working.
You never went to a meeting after that. You never went to a sales.
I get that engage in childish nonsense, Mike. I've been in meetings with the county.
You were never there. When did you negotiate? You never went to another meeting. I don't know what you're talking about. Okay, uh, we have, um. We have one public hearing tonight. It is, uh, regarding an ordinance amending Article Three. Entitled municipal buildings policies of the administrative regulations of the city of Augsburg. It is bill number twenty. I will open that up to public hearing now. Anyone attending in person will like to come down the podium. You'll have five minutes. Anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, we have, um.
Mayor, could you declare the public hearing calls, please?
I declare, okay. So, thank you. Okay, uh, we have a proclamation, and it's on behalf of, uh, Mr. Porter for all his hard work. And, uh, volunteering and helping our community. And we'll read that now. Whereas John Porter joined the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad in nineteen seventy-two. And whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Porter completed his fiftieth year as a volunteer. With the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad. And whereas Mr. Porter has maintained either New York State advanced life support. Basic life support or DIVE master certifications for the past fifty years. And whereas Mr. Porter currently serves as the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad offshore rescue team leader. And is a member of the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad Board of Directors. And whereas Mr. Porter, um, is, um. Is what it means to serve your neighbor. Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey M. Skelly, Mayor of the City of Augsburg, do hereby proclaim Monday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. As John Porter Appreciation Day in the City of Augsburg. Uh, light of, uh, Mr. Porter's remarkable. Achievement and unselfish dedication of his time to serve us community. And I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing Mr. Porter for his achievement and contribution to our city.
Ken, will you make sure you get it on video when he gets his formal proclamation? So when you're hiding under your desk for the next three weeks, we know where to find you. Make sure you develop, maybe they can get a nice picture.
Will do. Thank you guys for everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank John. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address counsel. Please come down to the podium. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Michael Tulio, 214 Hamilton Street. As a citizen, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I recently read a news article, which I share with you this evening pertaining to an effort by the New York Conference of Mayors to seek an increase in aid for incentives from municipalities, the AIM state aid that Angela referenced in her presentation, to advocate for an increase in the 2023 state budget. In the article, NICOM CEO Peter Baines makes the following points. One, Governor Hokel's proposed 2023 state budget increases spending by $7 billion, yet for the 14th consecutive year, there is no increase in funding for AIM. Two, Mr. Baines calls for a new program in addition to AIM, which will provide funding to municipalities for public safety and controlling property taxes. He suggests such aim might be titled Municipal Operating Aid. And he suggests that this new funding is tied to the service, services, localities provided in the number of residents they serve. Three, NICOM is asking for $100 million in MOA funding in the 2023 budget. In doing so, NICOM estimates localities might be owed $270 million if the funding is tied to Consumer Price Index from the last time there was a, a change. And then four, Mr. Baines also suggests the state provide for annual creases in MOA once it is established. New York State currently pays municipality $750 million in AIM, with Augsburg receiving 1.7 million. If an additional 100 million additional aid is paid to municipalities, and Augsburg could receive its current percentage of AIM of these new monies, it would mean an additional $250,000 in annual revenue to the city. And so I suggest city council consider adopting a resolution at its next meeting in support of NICOM's proposal to create and fund municipal operating aid or its equivalent in the 2023 state budget. Perhaps at the same time, we could do the resolution in support of correcting the broken system of EMS that Mr. Gardner referred to tonight. Uh, next, a minor thing, but regarding Bills 28, 30, and 31, I believe the resolution should include a detail of the accounts affected in the transaction. For example, in Bill 28, $22,000 is requested to increase the city manager budget. But I think you should identify which accounts are impacted, how much the salary going up, employee benefits, et cetera. And similarly, in budget transfers, specific accounts should be identified as to their increase or decrease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda that claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number Four dash 2023, an amount of $584,729.39. And Library Warrant Number Four dash 2023, an amount of $0. And Capital Fund Warrant Number Four dash 2023, an amount of $29,784.50. And Community Development Warrant uh, Number Four dash 2023, an amount of $75.98. And the Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number Four dash 2023, an amount of $0, as audited, be and the same hereby or ordered paid. So move.
I had a question, a couple items. I'm not sure if they can be answered right now, but I know um, uh, the second page of expense accounts where it says salaries. I've seen two salaries that specifically just stand out to me, and I'm wondering why. One at 53.5 and one at 66,000. This is under the biweekly uh payroll. And so then, I don't, I'm not sure if that can be answered tonight or, but they're pretty high numbers that just sort of stood out to me. Uh, it says AA 312110. Oh, it's police. So is this back pay or overtime or do you think? A, a number that high, I'm just wondering if it's a biweekly salary. Just really struck me, uh, I know there's a lot of overtime being, being uh happening at the police department, but it's not listed under overtime. So I was just.
So what does our, both of them pertaining to buyouts of the police department have one buyout of an employee?
Okay.
And the department's in 3410, that's 66. That's sort of a mixed line. It was buyouts. It wasn't a buyout in that one, but that would be additional pay that they received. Uh, it's not overtime, though. It's, that line is hazard pay, and the same time those paid out.
Okay.
The account that's $53,000 was the buyout um for the police department, and $66,000. These are all time accruals that are accruing on the books that are getting paid out.
Okay. Usually that happens in December, doesn't it? You see that a lot, or maybe in the early January?
The police department has the option to turn in time, and they get paid throughout the year, I'm correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Correct. So the fire department, um, there's paid out usually in, leave this out of course, yes.
Okay. And so that didn't get paid then, but?
No, it did. Um, that did get paid. I would have to go to the detail of that pay week and take a look at it, um, see why that expenditure did increase.
Okay.
Because a normal week for that um certainly a little bit different. So I, I can circle back on that.
It's just something that stood out and I went, wow. You know what I'm saying? So sorry. Just, it struck me. So thank you, Angela.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is an ordinance amending Article Three entitled Municipal Buildings Policies of the Administrative Regulations of the City of Augsburg.
I'll move that. That's okay.
I seconded it, Kathy.
Thank you.
I just was trying not to interrupt the conversation.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing new fees for the Debisky Center. Whereas the City of Augsburg operates the Debisky Center for use by the public, and whereas the Augsburg City's Council establishes the fee for recreation activities and use of facilities, and whereas after a review of the rate scheduled by staff in the Recreation Commission, there is a recommendation to increase fees as outlined in the attached table.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
So the, uh, just a little comment on this, um, council. So this, the previous bill um removed from our ordinance the actual listed rates for the rental of the space at the Debisky Center, and instead inserted language that the fees shall be established by the city council on an annual basis. Over the last few years, we've made that change throughout our code so that the, um, we didn't have to have a public hearing every time we wanted to change the rates, and we could adjust the rates uh publicly through, through the budget session. Um, so that language has now been changed by resolution this evening, and this, these are the recommended rates. Staff did take the recommendation of council at the last meeting and proposed resident and non-resident fees for the Debisky Center, which is consistent with what we do at our other facilities.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a fiscal year 2023 Preserve New York grant. Whereas Preserve New York grants provide support to eligible 501(c)(3) not-for-profits and municipalities in New York State for projects that identify, document, and preserve New York's cultural and historic buildings, structures, and landscapes. And whereas this program funds consulting reports only and will not fund capital repairs or construction costs, architectural plans and specifications, schematic designs, or construction documents. And whereas the Oswego Gachi Pump House has been identified as an eligible site for a site-specific project under the category of Historic Structure Reports. And whereas a Historic Structure Report is a comprehensive building documentation study usually undertaken at the beginning of a major restoration or rehabilitation project. A Historic Structure Report provides document, documentary, graphic, and physical information about the property's history and existing condition. A Historic Report, Structure Report also addresses management or owner goals for use and reuse or interpretation of the property. A complete Historic Report should include a description of the building's history, including its occupants, a building construction chronology, an analysis of the current condition, drawings, which could include sketches and measured drawings and photographs, recommendations for its restoration, rehabilitation, or treatment, preliminary cost estimates, and it may also include a specialized conservation study. Whereas the program requires that each applicant contribute at least 20% of project costs as a cash match to the maximum award of $20,000. And whereas Preserve New York applications are due March 31st, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council authorizes the city manager to submit a fiscal year 2023 Preserve New York grant application for the development of a Historic Treasure Report for the Oswego Gachi Pump House.
I'll move that. Sorry I didn't do it earlier. Yeah, I'm just might run us, what this might cost.
Uh, they typically are within the 20 to $30,000 range, and the maximum grant is $20,000.
So, and we'd be responsible for 20% of it?
Correct.
So if I'm not mistaken, maybe two years ago, we passed a resolution awarding a contract to put that roof on that building uh for about 25,000?
We just did a roof replacement this fall on one of the additions on the back, a shetstone metal roof. It was done in October.
For like around 25 grand or so?
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so this is beyond that.
This is a Historic Structure Report, and it doesn't have anything to do with any actual building improvement. It really sets us up for reuse planning for the facility, which is currently used in cold storage.
Okay.
Primarily for the recreation.
It, it's such a beautiful building that could be revamped. I'm glad to see us do this. Thank you. Did somebody second it?
Yes, yes.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a fiscal year 2023 FEMA Safer Grant.
Uh, just a note that, that there is a, there are a couple corrections in the resolution. Uh, first, it will be submitted by the city manager, not the interim city manager. We would be looking to put in an application to hire up to four firefighters, which would bring the uh, the shifts to five firefighters per shift and a total complement of 20.
Okay, oh, go ahead. Yeah, discussion.
Do we motion to make those amendments? Or is it just automatic?
I believe it was Andrea's intention to introduce it that way, although it was moved and seconded before she was able to.
I'm sorry.
So that's okay. With council's consensus, we could all agree that it will be moved as amended. Yes.
Yes.
I.
Counselor Powers, are you in agreement with that?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
No.
Counselor Dillaba.
No.
Our next item of business will be read by City Comptroller, Angela Gray.
Good evening. This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to appropriate the use of fund balance for additional anticipated costs in the city manager department. Whereas the city council has approved the hiring of a city manager, and whereas it is necessary to appropriate a portion of the existing fund balance to increase appropriations related to the cost of the city manager's department. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is hereby authorized to make the following budget adjustments to the 2023 budget. To increase the city manager department by $22,000, modifying that budget from an amount of $193,594 to a total of $215,594. The increase of 22,000 will increase the budget appropriated fund balance.
I'll move that.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Angela Gray also.
This is a resolution to amend the 2022 Budget AA 3089 Code State Aid Revenue to include the receipt of a grant from the New York State Financial Restructuring Board in the amount of $950,000 for the purchase of a fire truck.
I'll move that.
Yes.
What's that? Didn't we already do?
Correct. We did this in 2021, uh, 2021's budget. However, the first truck was not ordered at that point in time. Therefore, we couldn't recognize the revenue. And without that commitment of an order in 2021, we had anticipated to encumber the fund balance for that, but it wasn't at a place and time through the ordering process that we could do that. So we are duplicating uh that for the 2022 budget because that's when the activity essentially ended up happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item will be also read by Angela Gray.
The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the city manager to transfer unencumbered funds from the planning department to the Department of City Manager.
I'll move that.
I'll second it. So this, does this $56,000 cover uh salary for city manager?
It does. It covers the salary and the related employment taxes on that.
Okay.
To what, to what position?
So there was a position unfunded to start in the planning department for a planner. And when that position went unfunded, the previous city manager hired an assistant to the city manager. And that is where the money needs to be appropriated from is the city manager budget. The cost to cover that position comes from the planning department in an unfilled position.
We, we've. We initially voted on the $56,000 over a year and a half ago under the guise of assistance for Andrea and planning. And then ultimately, it was just laterally moved into a position for the city manager's assistant, or whatever the position was called?
That's what it was titled on the forms for hiring that position. So the resolution just calls that position worked specifically, from my perspective, largely in part of the codes department.
Specifically assisting with the ARPA program.
Correct. So it's just.
But I don't recall, I don't recall voting on it.
We didn't. In fact, it had a zero budget line.
So I'm wondering why we're voting on it now, if it didn't exist in the first place?
I questioned the city manager, if you remember, at, I believe, the February 28, 2022 council meeting as to what the position was, and he told me administrative assistant. That was false information. Later on, in an email, he went on to explain the actual title, according to civil service, is Secretary to the City Manager. And it was for a salary of $78,790. He worked mostly in code enforcement, picking up the slack where they took that power away from the fire department. Also, we were told in an email dated March 17, 2022, from the city manager, that that person could only make $36,000 a year because he was retired, if you remember this, and he got a substantial buyout for his retirement. So that's what I'm wondering too, Mike, is what the $56,000 actually entitles? Was the salary, did it add up to $36,000? Or was it closer to the $80,000? And how did that actually work? So just wondering, obviously at this point, the person's been paid. And we were assured that that would have been a mid-year transfer. It did not happen back in June by the city manager, so.
Am I correct to, and I think I may recall, Dan, am I correct to assume that the individual, without naming him, it was approved retirement from the state comptroller's office in the same email?
That's what the city manager told us, I believe, yes. Yep. Think I have a copy of the email somewhere here. But.
Hate to see his, hate to see his income tax return. Tired. He's making $56,000, well, and additional 30 somewhere.
Yeah. And he got a substantial buyout as well. Much more than was offered to the rest of the department at the time, so.
I simply don't recall moving this money or appropriating this money in any of the previous budgets.
We never did, other than it was dedicated to Andrea's department. And I believe the position was supposed to be for trying to market Augensberg, if you will. So, yeah. Yeah, we did indicate in that email on March 17 that he had retired. Yes, you're right, Mike, so.
So the position was budgeted in the planning department, as indicated by Angela. We did advertise and interview for that position. We did offer the job to an individual who turned down the job offer. So the position went unfilled, which is ultimately why to, why we're doing and requesting this budget amendment. That position went unfilled in 2022. There were other individuals, an individual hired in another area, which is at the discretion of the city manager to do. And the costs to cover that were coming from that line. This budget amendment should have happened much sooner, but in an effort to close out and tidy up 2022, we're doing it now.
Sorry.
So, has this been moved?
Yes, it has been moved and seconded.
So Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Jelloba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah, we've already paid it, so.
Yes. Is that a yes?
Yes, that's a yes.
Counselor Powers.
I'm not comfortable with this at all. I mean, he's already been paid, and I don't see where the discretion with the city managers was allowed, especially when it was such a heavily debated topic. But recognizing that you're trying to right a wrong, I'll support it.
That's a yes, sir?
Yeah.
Counselor Scamperley.
I also will support righting a wrong, so thank you.
A yes, sir?
Yes.
Approved.
And our next item is also Angela Gray.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to transfer funds to balance the 2022 budget.
I'll move that.
And I'll second that. Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
One of the things that strikes out is especially the overtime or the over-budget with the fire department at $644,000 plus. Again, it just bewilders me why we wouldn't support asking for the SAFER Grant. Anybody in my, in my opinion, you would have to be trying to sabotage the city coffers, especially after the presentation we're just giving, and how detrimental every dollar we can possibly save is. And so obviously I'm going to support this because it has to be, but.
I would like to provide some clarity around specifically the shortage of the fire department of $644,000.
Good.
If you recall, in July, July 25 council meeting, the council did appropriate additional funding for overtime and time accrual payouts, approximately $400,000, maybe not quite that much, a quick math, back then. And what this 644 is largely represented of is the purchase of equipment, not related to the fire truck. And also, we have to make a provision for an estimated award on arbitration. So that does impact the 2022 budget. That covered the 2021 year, which is closed, in the 2022 year. So that is the driver of, in large and part of that budget.
Okay. Do we have any liability? I'm sorry.
We do have liability insurance within the city.
That would cover that arbitration at all, or any aspect of it? No. That's just plain decisions by the city that were mishandled. Thank you.
I think the sabotage was.
Oh, here we go. Six-year contract.
I'm speaking. Order. So, order please. So two days before the election, the fire department wanted a three-year contract, the city wanted a two-year contract. Four days after the election, they get a six-year contract with three and three and a half percent every year. So that was the sabotage. And now that's why we're facing this problem with all the overtime and the hazard pay. Because they were given such a sweet.
If I can here, I'm not going to use the word sabotage, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the city chose to violate the Taylor Law and quite frankly, has to answer for that now through a binding contract. You can blame the six-year contract, you can blame the percentage raises, you can blame health insurance, you can blame whatever you want, at the end of the day. But that $644,222 is ultimately, a good portion of that is due to the actual violation of the Taylor Law, plain and simple. And ultimately, at the end of the day, this former city manager and the ones that supported doing this are going to be the ones that own it.
So that was pushed, that was caused by those contracts and those raises that could not be afforded.
Does that apply for all the other units? Does that apply for all the other units too?
So anyways, that, doing nothing. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Does that apply to all the other?
Go ahead.
Does that apply to all the other bargaining units as well? Length of the time, the percentage use and the health insurance?
Basically, that six-year contract and that overtime hazard pay is cannibalizing the rest of the city and all the rest of the services and all the capital projects and the future of the Augensberg.
That's a great word.
Why would you cannibalize?
Remember that. Remember that word. Remember that word.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Mr. Bouchard, you've been disruptive all night. Please be respectful. You also lead. Are you, you have more, Angela?
That is it. We just need to vote on this.
Thank you.
Then again, why would you possibly vote against free fire?
Why would you have done what you did after the election?
Paid a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a give and take.
Yeah, your sewer plant, your ready plant.
Meant a lot, Mike. You mentioned one aspect of that contract.
Everything. You entered county, you destroyed the city.
Not even close to.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counselor Jelloba.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Approved.
I find it funny that you won't support a SAFER Grant to offset the cost, and you'll support the potential arbitration.
It's been voted on, so if you want to go on to old business, new business, or discussion, bring it up again, Mike. And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business? If we don't have some order, I'll clear this, council. Behave. Be responsible. Okay, so this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business? Items for discussion?
I just had one thing under new business. Are we, when does the ice come out of Lockwood?
Next week.
And 17th? And we started trying to market it out for like youth lacrosse or anything like that.
Our recreation director will be giving a presentation to council probably at the first meeting in April about shoulder uses.
Perfect. Okay. Trying to think of ways to, a little bit of extra revenue to offset some of that.
And this brings us to items for discussion, and we will begin with Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, I just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of piggyback on what Angela had presented with regard to the closeout of 2022 and where we are with our fund balance and our capital needs. So we have talked at the last several meetings about the need to replace the city hall roof. This has been a topic of discussion really for over a year. We have invested in completing a building assessment of the entire city hall, the engineering and design of the roof, as well as the asbestos testing, put that out to bid, got bids. Unfortunately, the timing of the bids did not align with our budget schedule, which was also discussed during budgeting. But we knew that this was up and coming and something that was really, as Angela indicated, mission critical. So it doesn't take too much, if you walk around the building, for you to see where we have substantial water damage. On a rainy day, there are buckets on various places of the building collecting water. We've made investments in updating and improving the offices for staff at city hall, but only to have them start to be ruined already in very short order because we haven't addressed the roof. So council, at our last meeting, did, Counselor Powers reintroduced a resolution to award the project to Titan Roofing for a price of $396,220 that did receive approval from council. But ultimately, we do need to determine where that will be funded from. There hasn't been consensus of at least five members of council for banning, although that does remain staff's strong recommendation. In addition to that critical project, council has also approved by resolution and expenditure rounding $7,000 to provide a security system at our police department because it is no longer manned 24 hours a day now that we no longer have dispatch. That has been approved by resolution, but again, was not included in our 2023 budget as a capital project. Just last week, just in the last two weeks, we had the five-year sprinkler inspection at the community center, the Debisky Community Center. The sprinkler system failed the five-year inspection. And as of yesterday, we received a written quote for the necessary repairs. Again, rounding the expenses associated with that are $21,000. We also know that, again, to address security at the police station, we do need to address the use of window units that are no longer really appropriate since the building is not staffed on a 24-hour basis. So the need to upgrade the HVAC for that facility is also an imperative and imminent need. And we've received written quotes in the amount of $35,000. Collectively, those four essential projects are equivalent of $460,000. And the recommendation from staff is to take out financing as opposed to banning for those projects, as opposed to taking it from the fund balance, excuse me. We estimate that the year-end fund balance will be in the $2.7 million range. It's an estimate. And, you know, the gap between that and where the recommended state minimum fund balance is, as Angela indicated, about just $800,000. These projects alone, which really are time-sensitive, essential projects that cannot wait, would take more than half of that away immediately. That is financially irresponsible, and therefore, it is critical that we have a conversation with council to get the necessary support to take out financing to complete these projects. The only other option at this point in time to complete these in a timely manner is to take the money from the fund balance, which just really will jeopardize where you are even further going into 2024 and beyond with your budgeting cycles. So I wanted to take an opportunity to give council time to talk amongst yourselves in public and sort of talk through, you know, what are your questions about these projects? What are your sticking points so that staff can respond to them and hopefully bring you a resolution to finance these at your next meeting?
Can I start? Well, I don't think we can deplete the fund balance anymore. I understand the critical projects. And I think financing, in some respect, and I'm sure staff knows the best way, needs to be done. We simply cannot deplete the fund balance. That would be, I agree with you 100%, completely irresponsible. And I know we're in a tough situation, but I support financing those projects and getting them done ASAP. So just my thoughts on that.
I echo, I echo Dan's sentiments. I mean, obviously, the security at the police department, we have, you know, there's crucial evidence, information that needs to be obviously very high importance. We can't, if we're not going to be able to man the department, it needs to be secure.
Yeah, I think we're taking too many loans out. We got money. That's it. So the Debisky Center, according to what I've known, is, we could be locked out of the Debisky Center for not fixing that as a hazard. So I don't know how much we could wait on it. That's why I think this is a critical thing we need to do. And also, my understanding is there is going to be a new vendor moving in first of April. And if we happen to delay that, we might have to pay some kind of liquidated damages for delaying that. So I strongly urge the council to consider funding this. So I, I strongly urge the council to consider funding this.
Well, our city's been neglected for decades and, uh, you know, I, I, I do worry that we are taking on so many loans. And it would be unfortunate if time comes and our city can't pay those loans, but, uh, these are critical, critical projects and and we really in two thousand and sixteen, I think the fund balance was down to six hundred and something thousand, and that's and that was irresponsible then, and this would be, this would be irresponsible now to, to go down below the recommended fund bound. So I am supportive of more on this, but it's I just hope, I just hope we don't ever default on, on all these loans.
Okay.
Also, I did want to mention, so those are the mission critical projects. Um, we do have other capital project needs, and I know that the conversation of grants often comes up when we're talking about financing. The reason I don't think that grants in particular are a sensible, uh, solution to the problem for any of the projects I've just mentioned is a timing issue. There are no grants that are presently open and available for any of these. Um, and these primarily fall within the category of maintenance, which are not oftentimes funded uh, through, through, through the grant process. The, one of the exceptions to that is the USDA Community Facilities Grant Loan Program. And I do think that we should look at that as a potential funding partner for projects that are not as time-sensitive as those that I just mentioned. Those include the, the need to replace the roof of the fire department, the need to replace the roof at the Dubisky Center, and the need to complete repairs at the Lafayette Street Bridge. Collectively, those three projects are one-point-eight million dollars. There are potential grant partners out there to help with those projects, and we do have a little bit more time to, to think through those partnerships, make applications and weigh our decisions, uh, and hopefully a, avoid long-term banning or bonding for those. But I don't think that that is a reasonable option for the, the, the mission critical items previously mentioned.
So we are, we are short two counselors tonight, so we will have to.
Right, so I'm not looking for action on this, but it is just really imperative that council, both present and absent this evening, recognize that financing is, requires more than a simple majority. Financing will require at least five votes in the affirmative. And so far, there have not been five votes. Uh, so I just, uh, I do have a little table here. I will make sure that it is distributed to council that outlines the costs, uh, and then the recommendations of staff along with the projected fund balances that Angela outlined, so you can hopefully that will illustrate the impact that taking this from the fund balance would have on the long-term financial stability of the city. Uh, we will work to with City Manager Buhari to bring a resolution to council to formalize financing. Uh, if in the meantime, any members of council have questions on why these items are so important or, um, other options that we've looked at, I, I please do reach out and I'm happy to go through that with you in an effort to, uh, achieve approval at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, does anyone else have any items for discussion?
I have one.
I don't know if it's necessarily, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mike. It's fine.
I don't know if it's necessarily an item for discussion, but I'd like to acknowledge, um, a young man, a young high school student who that, uh, recently competed in the States in the, in state wrestling, Archie Green. I see the, uh, he had a nice send-off, uh, last week and, and to acknowledge many of the athletics and the students, uh, uh, in our school district for, uh, their successes on the athletic fields and then the academics. Uh, we don't do enough of that. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's necessary to engage our, our young, um, uh, going forward and, and to, uh, to, to acknowledge the good work that they do and, and more importantly, uh, try and engage them to offer up, uh, their thoughts and opinions as, uh, i- i- is, is a, as a city and, uh, and a future, uh, gun-willing, uh, future resident.
Ditto, Mike, and, uh, Archie Green. Uh, I, I've met him personally. What a great kid, outstanding, humble athlete and, and a great athlete. Uh, thank you for mentioning him. Are you done, Mike?
Uh, yeah, for now, yeah.
Cool.
Um, I was just wondering, I've had a lot of, um, parents reach out wondering, do we have any like extra equipment where we could do an outside like for like street hockey that would keep the like behind the lockwood? Like, do we have any extra? There's nothing extra. Well, no, I didn't know if people could bring their, like, for summer to keep. No, I meant like, do we have like, are there like extra boards or nets or anything like that? Nothing? Oh, okay. I was just wondering. People were asking, except parking lot isn't utilized very often, so people are just wondering if there was something available, so I said I would ask, but I didn't know what we had. How long they would last out there. That's understandable. I asked.
Uh, you know, one of the things, uh, I'd like, and if he's just got a moment, I, I'd like the police chief to come up and I just, I just want to know how things are going down there. I know at budget time, I heard a lot from police and I'm still hearing from community members, uh, how stressed out the police are with the overtime. Is that still the case right now since the budget started or? Uh, and how are things at the department? So.
Sorry if I caught you by surprise here.
Yeah, um, so, so overall, I guess I'll say, um, morale goes up and down. Um, it's kind of cyclical. Um, times, times are tough down there without a doubt. Um, the loss of our two dispatchers, um, we're learning had a bigger effect on the department than we realized it would have just on paper. Um, there's a lot of duties that those two gentlemen did for us than, uh, we realized, um, a lot of work that hasn't been getting done. We're like, well, who did that? Well, uh, those two dispatchers did it and they got, they got the work done for us. And, uh, we're realizing a lot of, uh, airport overtime that we have, two flights a day, um, are on overtime, where normally if we had that dispatcher sitting that desk during the day, now I have a police officer sitting that desk during the day and since that police officer's sitting the desk and is not on the road, it's now overtime. And it, that's two more times a day that an officer has to come in from off-shift or come in from home to cover that airport. And it's normally not a time-consuming job, but still an interruption of their day. And frankly, the current airline, not OBPPA, the Virgin Port Authority is a great partner for us, but the airline itself, uh, has been the worst airline we've ever worked with out there. They delay, delay, delay for hours and hours and hours. And so that officer that I have on overtime is sitting there doing nothing but collecting, um, overtime money. Uh, yes, they can help out our, our, our staff helping out with calls while they're here. But, uh, really it's at the, two-thirds of it approximately is at the expense of OBPAA. And, uh, ultimately, the airline will, will cancel their flight. Or they'll, they'll cancel their flight fifteen, twenty minutes before the flight is supposed to go off. And for our contractor, officers still get to pay the four hours of overtime. And again, about two-thirds of that is paid by OBPAA, so they're, they're paying a bill for their contract and the city's paying some of that for service that was never provided. And, uh, and that's on the airline. But that's a lot of work on, um, our, our men and women. They're, they're coming in for, for that airport flight, um, a- as well as our shift overtime. Right now, the shifts are minimum of during the day, they have to have three because one person has to be our day shift dispatcher and then two people to work the road. And on night shift, the minimum staffing is two. Um, and then obviously St. Lawrence County dispatches our nighttime dispatcher. But with those staffing levels, um, anytime someone takes the day off, it is overtime. And it's the backfill that overtime is getting tougher and tougher to fill. Not financially, we're staying in budget. We budgeted correctly. At this point, we're, we're doing all right. Uh, but it's tough on the employees. They're already feeling that burnout. Nineteen's not going to be sustainable. We got through it last year. We'll get through it this year, but long-term, that isn't, it's not the appropriate number for the city of Augsburg. The, uh, at this point, the lieutenant is going to employees' doors and knocking on their door and forcing them into work. Frankly, they don't want to answer their phone because they know what it is. It's, you're forced into work. We, we need you to come work a shift. We need you to come work the airport. They're not answering their phone, so now I have the lieutenant out chasing down police officers to come into work. That's not a good situation.
Completely insane.
Yeah, and, and, and that's where we're at, so.
Doesn't sound cyclical to me.
So, but we have, uh, I say cyclical because they all have high hopes. We have two officers that are field training right now. And once those two field officers are out there field training, that's two additional bodies that can help take some of this workload. And we have a third that's currently in the police academy and then their field training will be, uh, completed in the summertime and come fall, that officer will also take some of the workload. So our, our nineteen bodies right now really isn't nineteen. It's, it's more like sixteen. And we have one that's out injured. Um, uh, they just had a, a surgery which this officer was working modified duty, was on desk assignment. Uh, can't even do that right now. So we're feeling that, uh, as, as a huge void as well, so our nineteen's not even close to our allotted nineteen, so.
Detectives? Do we have detectives working?
Still no detectives. No. Um, the goal on that again is, uh, one will be put back to a, to a detective, uh, with the first, uh, recruit officer that's done field training will replace the detective, allowing the detective to go back to his role as a detective. So I'm not going to like put a timeline on the person's field training, but hopefully late, late spring. And then, uh, I've really got to wait for the one to come out of the academy before I can make a second detective. But that's the ultimate goal anyways, is to have two detectives come late, by late fall. Just have two detectives back and, uh, I had a good chat with mayor about that actually is, you can put the detectives on the road, you can think it's helping the manpower on the road, but it's really not, uh, because these major crimes still occur. And all you're doing is having your uniform patrol officers still work these major crimes. They don't have the training, their expertise, or frankly, the time to spend on these major crimes because they're still got to answer all these other calls of service that keep coming in. And now that you have them tied up working these major crimes, with major crimes come major court appearances. You have court case after court case after court case and hearing after hearing after hearing. And you're now taking them off shift to go to all these court hearings, so I'm back filling them overtime to replace them on shift. Where if I had a detective, that's just what that detective does on that day. So there's not a cost savings at all to take that detective out of the detective unit and put them in a uniform patrol spot. And Augsburg frankly is just way too busy to not have detectives.
So it's compounding the overtime as well?
Yeah, um, it absolutely is. We're comparing, uh, roughly doing comparisons actually this morning. Sergeant Lu, the day shift sergeant and the lieutenant and I, um, year after year, we're about ten thousand calls of service. But the calls of service are, are, are changing. We're now almost every call of service is resulting into some sort of criminal complaint where it's not just, you guys had an argument, nobody wants anything done, okay. Be nice to each other and we drove away. Wasn't a bar fight at the old cozy corners like it used to be, right? Okay. Leave each other alone, you drove away. And that was it. You had a call of service. File a quick report and you moved on to your next call. Now things are resulting, everything, misdemeanor or felony arrests, it seems like. On average, our patrols are grabbing three new cases to investigate a shift. That's each officer. And that's hours and hours and hours, literally a paperwork now.
Plus court time.
Plus court time. And.
Minus the investigation aspect of it as well.
Exactly. And, and that's between those, those ten thousand calls are still ten thousand calls. So the investigations are taking forever, which is resulting in citizens complaining on how long it's taken their investigations to be handled. And this is tough for me as the administrator of the department to explain to the citizen who's upset is, yes, we're taking your complaint serious, but there's only so many hours in the day that our officers can handle all these complaints and, uh, still handle yours and make you feel like you're a priority. Because yes, this might be the worst thing that's ever happened to you, but in this officer's caseload, it might be very low in, in the grand scheme of things, so. I mean, that, that's the reality of things as of right now. But we're making, we're surviving, but it's surviving. It's not optimal, not, not even close, but we're trying to do it.
I worry about the mental health of your officers.
Yeah, we're and that's one of my projects I'm working on still is, uh, we're in the middle of, uh, building an officer wellness program. I've we've making leaps and bounds with that. We're in the middle of building an application, uh, for all our guys to have an officer wellness program right on their phone so they can reach out for help when needed and, uh, we've got partnerships with Nightly, uh, River Hospital and Alex Bay has a program for first responders. And they're only, it's only thirty minutes down the road. Uh, we got partnerships with, uh, peer support with Watertown Police Department, which is not that far, which is wonderful because we might know them by name, but we don't really know them, so and it's mutual benefit. They can also come to us. So, uh, trying to put the resources out there to our, to our men and women, so also we have something, but it's, we, we shouldn't have to get to a situation where you got to reach out either, so.
Well, thank you.
Well, of course.
Let them know I'm concerned anyways. I'm sure a few of us are about their mental health, so.
Yeah. The answer is revenue. It's always been more revenue. And city go up revenue over decades, um, gone down and, and then probably taken a very big hit. You know, there, wish more counselors would have part, participated in the sales tax, but, uh, was so important to us. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And this brings us to citizen participation. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council. Please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
Sorry, just a correction. Citizen participation have two minutes.
Oh, two minutes, I'm sorry.
Uh, Michael Tooley again. Um, looking for clarification with regards to the, uh, monies moving to twenty-twenty-two budget to cover the, uh, arbitration decision, the five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. I, I'd be curious to know whether the city is booking this as a liability on its books or whether it's encumbering the monies into the twenty-twenty-three year. Um, so the question boils down to if it's a liability, then it's already considered establishing the projected four-point-four million dollar budget. But if it's encumbered, then do we have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar encumbrance where the unencumbered balance available going forward is three-point-nine million? So I think you should get some clarification on that. With regards to financing the capital improvements, as, uh, as has been discussed by council. With regards to financing, the capital improvements, as has been discussed by council over the course of the past year, whatever, in different discussions about this, you do have a very low percentage of your constitutional debt limit. So you should take advantage of that flexibility there, I think, and do financing to take care of these needed projects. Three, with regards to fund balance, I suggest, in exploring where we're going to go in '24, but also further down the road, you might consider more flexibility in use and management of the fund balance. And, you know, I think, over my years in managing fund balance in public schools, you know, it was very conservative. You know, you really had to work to me to pull a penny out. But, you know, as was, as you taught me last year, last summer, about the, you know, the recommended, the suggested limit, that sometimes there are circumstances where the fund balance might go above that limit. There are also circumstances where you might consider taking the fund balance to a point below the recommended number. I'll make a reference to public schools in New York State. Real property tax law, New York State limits the amount of fund balance that a school district can bring forward into the next year of 4% of their budget. So imagine the Augsburg City School District, $45 million budget, 2% or 4% of that is a million eight. That's the most they can carry forward. Now, they also establish reserves, as you want to do someday, you know, to try to strengthen their balance sheet. Now, I'm not suggesting Augsburg consider a 4% limit, but I would suggest consideration maybe a floor of 10% of budget, so somewhere in the area of $1.5 million. So if you're projecting at the end of this year, $2.7 million fund balance, and I'm going to throw out a suggestion, apply $800,000 in 2024, apply $400,000 in 2025, apply zero in 2026 to get to a true balanced budget. Get your fund balance down to a level 1.5, which I think is livable, and try to get to the point where you're able to start restoring some fund balance again. So I would suggest you not lock yourself in right now, the same, you're not going to go below 2.3, 2.4 million. I think you need flexibility. Thank you for that, sir.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. So we do not have a need for executive session. I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Adjourned.